Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Shastberry Select Board for Monday, April 15, 2013. Tonight, we have kind of another interesting agenda. We have -- we're going to begin the hearing tonight, or begin the meeting tonight of the contingency republic hearing regarding open space subdivisions. We will then commence with regular business, but if we have not concluded all that by 8:00, we'll do a -- we're going to recess briefly to do a brief water board meeting again, much similar to the way we did last week. That'll be at 8:00. So, other than that, it's business as usual. So, without further ado, we'll give a -- we'll reopen the hearing regarding the open space subdivision. Chris Williams is the chair of the Planning Commission, the lead of the view. That would be appreciated.
Thank you, Greg. Well, I wanted to take a moment and see if we could refocus the discussion that we had two weeks ago on this issue. We've kind of got off on a tangent, I felt, and I'm probably responsible for that, so I apologize. I think the important points to remember are that this is not a template for low-income housing development, which was kind of hinted at at the last hearing. I think this is pretty neutral in terms of where it falls in the housing market. You could just easily imagine that this would be a very high-end exclusive development, that the underlying principle, which is one of the principles, which is very simple and easy to understand, is that a group of people could afford to buy more land than an individual. And so therefore, really what this is about is open space, and I don't think that it has any prejudice toward where it fits in the real estate market. So, with that said, you know, this would, you know, if you believe that preserving open space is desirable, this is a real tool that could do that. The format for ownership is left deliberately vague. In other words, there could be a whole range of different ownership structures in this situation, which could be condo association, a cooperative, a land trust, but it all involves common ownership of a piece of land. And the benefit, common ownership being difficult to achieve, the benefit is that you can build a community, a new community, that's kind of shaped to fit into the environment, the land itself, a little bit better, and that everybody in the community gets the benefit of 20% of the land being commonly owned and perpetually open. So, these seem like very straightforward values. They seem like values that, you know, you could see as Chasbury grew in the next 25 years, say that this could be an important tool in building more kind of sensitive designed So, I would remind you lastly that this is a bylaw which is already on the books, and we're revising it. So, the question before you really is, have we made it better? Did we do all the right, set in motion all the right incentives and mechanisms to get a fairly predictable outcome and that it would, you know, everybody would have confidence that this is an improvement of the present bylaw? And lastly, there's a matter of logistics of approval, and that would be, we found out late in the game that there was a parallel section in the subdivision regulations that deals with open space subdivisions. And the wording is not the same, and it would be contradicted in a few points by the adoption of this bylaw. It's always dangerous to have regulations in two different places because it's easy to get them across purposes. So, then, we have warned us as a bylaw revision, so legally, I think that we have to deal with the bylaws alone. And Bill Pentebaker has done a really credible job of updating the subdivision piece to agree with the bylaw proposed, and so we haven't even approved that at the planning commission level, so we can set that in motion. So, up to this, to make sure there's no contradictions. Or, another choice would be to delete it from one place or the other, so that it is deleted from the zoning bylaw in entirety, or it's deleted from subdivision regulations in entirety, so you only have one iteration of the thing.
So, if you were to do that, for instance, you would just, you would just put a reference on, I mean, if we had open space subdivision, you'd refer them to the subdivision regulations?
Just to explain, the subdivision regulations are separate from the bylaw, are different sections?
No, they are separate documents altogether. How it evolved that way, I have no idea, but, you know, we've dealt mainly with the bylaw and just lack of familiarity with the subdivision regulations. We didn't catch this until the 11th hour.
Does the planning commission, did you say whether you had a recommendation for one or the other, or?
All right. Well, that's a good question. I guess my choice would be to revise the subdivision regulations, to agree with the zoning bylaw, and do that as a follow-up process.
So, there'd be reference in both documents, then, to this?
Yeah, and, you know, the difference between one and another is a lot.
Do you think it wouldn't, do you not think it advisable to approve those changes at the same time, though?
Those changes.
I mean, well, in other, in other words, if we were to adopt this as a zoning bylaw, amendment to the zoning bylaws, depending upon how long it took the planning commission to revise the language in the subdivision regulations, is there a, is there a chance that there could be some confusion? I mean, not that there are people standing in line, I'm sure, you know, clamoring for this open space subdivision language, but...
Well, it hasn't happened yet.
No, I know. It's not maybe a must.
That's what we're trying to maybe help that possible.
Well, as I said earlier, Bill Pentebaker has done for a draft of what a revised subdivision regulation would look like, and I think with only a tiny bit of tweaking, we could prove that and hold a hearing at the planning commission and send it up to you as the...
So, it could be done pretty quickly.
Next step. But, you know, just deleting it entirely in one place or another isn't all, you know, it's not the question either.
So, if we did take, following that train, as the alternate train, we could take what has been drafted that we're here discussing tonight, this open space portion, and eliminate it altogether as a bylaw and incorporate it entirely into the subdivision regulations as a, so we only revise one document, basically? Or, is that, am I understanding that correctly, that we could...
Well, I think so, but I don't believe that was what was warned at the beginning of the hearing.
Well, I understand that.
Okay, all right. Clarify that.
So, basically, that is one option, to basically rescind what we're talking about right now from a legal or warrant standpoint, and then incorporate those changes along with the other revisions that you've mentioned. Bill has already drafted for the board to begin review and put that all together. How about conversely, could you do it the other way around? Could you, could we eliminate the subdivision regulation as a separate document and incorporate it into the bylaw?
No.
Not without hearings.
The subdivision regulation has a huge amount of procedural material in terms of how the hearings are held, what has to be presented, what a sketch plan is, what a final plat is, on and on and on, lots of detail. Twenty pages, probably.
Okay.
Even if you took this out, 20 pages.
Okay. All right. That answers that question. Karen, do you have anything further at the moment? I recognize, come back to you, but I just, Carl?
I'm just curious, when was the last time these were actually utilized for subdivision in Chasberry? Do you have any idea, Chris?
These being?
A subdivision issue coming up in Chasberry.
Subdivisions are constant, that this is the main...
I guess my thought is not subdividing a person's particular property, but, you know, if we're talking about a large subdivision of multiple areas. I know we deal with people wanting subdivision.
DRB is really the agents, the board that deals with that. There was a small subdivision in North Chasberry when I, when we split the planning commission to create planning board and the DRB and eliminated, you know, zoning board. So, that was about six years ago.
It was before my time. I didn't come on until after that was...
Okay. Well, you know, I mean, we're at the bottom of the housing market, you know, for the past four years, anyway.
Yeah.
Things are saying to come back slowly, so there hasn't been much building of any kind. So, no, I mean, not within probably six years has there been any subdivision that I'm aware of. There's been lots of minor subdivisions.
Sure, I understand that.
Slicing up the lots, smaller and smaller.
I'm only asking because, you know, when you, when you started speaking, you said, you know, maybe in 20 years, somebody's going to come in, do a substantial subdivision. I haven't seen, you know, a major thing like that in the time that I've had property in Chasberry, which is now going on 30 years.
Oh, well, Hidden Valley, which is hidden.
Hidden Valley, I guess it's true.
You might have noticed, but there's a lot of houses.
Yeah, there's a lot of houses down there.
Well, that's within 30 years.
Yeah. Was that actually a subdivision?
Well, in several stages, yeah.
Oak Hill, would that qualify as one, too?
Sure.
Not as, not as large, but definitely...
And Birchville.
Right. Down off Wake Farm Road down there.
So, yeah, you know, I mean...
Not frequently, but regularly.
Well, part of the economic cycle, you know. I mean, right now, we're losing population, you know. We're not in a growth, growth mode in Chasberry right now. There's not enough reason for people to move this area.
I was just trying to get an idea, you know, how significant these changes might be in the future, in terms of, in terms of people using...
Well, you know, predicting the future is always a dangerous business, but what I can say is that there's a lot of developable land in Chasberry as a percentage of the town land area, because less of Chasberry's steep slopes than our surrounding towns, with the exception of Bennington, really. You know, we have more valley land, and as such, you know, and we also have very high-density zoning, small lots, in other words, you know. Great part of the rural parts of the town are zoned R40, less than one acre. This is suburban-scale zoning.
Thanks.
Bill?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Ken?
Is this something that the board would pass, or would this go to a tall vote? What do you get?
At this point, my understanding of the regulation would be this would be something we would approve. Yeah, because this is a, zoning bylaws are at the, the rest of the, the process of meetings and hearings is pretty defined by the state. People have the right to make their say, and then, but ultimately, if it comes to the point, it's a choice done, or it's a decision made by the select board.
I just, I don't know. You get the feeling that Westgen is down there playing on their own little program and that we got no say in anything, and I'd hate to get that down to the local level. Well, I think what I'm getting at is personally, when you get different things like this changed in the town, I think I'd rather see the people vote on it than just us.
Ken, I think the perception that people don't have input is very skewed. We have, people give input at these meetings constantly, and I know that you've never sat on that, haven't sat on that side of the table very often, but the people who have sat on that side of the table have often spoke to the board, been recognized and had the board consider their input. So, when people in the town show up to meetings and give input to the board, they very often have the ability to be heard.
No, I understand that, though. It's just like I say, I just, I don't want people to feel, just from my part, that they're not having their say.
If we had to hold a vote every time we changed a bylaw, it would be very expensive.
No, I mean, you could tie it in with when you have a normal event coming up, would be my thought.
The practice, and again, point well taken, Ken, and I think that, you know, the democratic way is what we're trying to accomplish, so, but this is, this is practice that has long stood the test of time across the state related to zoning bylaws.
No, I'm not questioning that. I just, like I said, it just, I think that I wouldn't want to contribute to the people not feeling that they were heard, having their say.
Thank you. Okay, well, then, so I think after hearing the questions that Chris has presented, I'm thinking we have, I guess, a couple of questions before us that we kind of, to help guide where we head next. One is, one relates to deciding, I guess the first one is deciding whether we're going to continue to proceed with a zoning bylaw amendment, something along the lines that, along the lines of what the board has presented, as opposed to tabling it or rejecting it and suggesting that it be incorporated into the subdivision regulations, as Chris suggested. So, that, I guess, would be one question. And then, the second would be if the answer is to have them continue as two separate items, one in the zoning bylaw and one in the subdivision regulations, then to ask the planning commission to, if they, as quickly as they're able to do that, make those revisions in the subdivision regulations, as Chris has characterized them as, well, it's easy to say when Bill's done all the work. But it should be a relatively streamlined task to remake those revisions, run it through the hearing process, and bring it back so that both of those documents then conceivably align and eliminate the most items that would cause problems or conflict, so...
Has there been any query to the DRB to determine? Because they're the ones, then, that would have to basically, you know, take this language and make sure that any subdivision request abides by it. So, I'm just wondering whether they had been asked the opinion of, you know, is there a preference, that it be in only one document and referenced in the other? Would it make, would it simplify a process down the line to have it in only one document?
Well, it seems like a good practice in general to only have it in one document.
Yeah.
But, you know, I could ask that question at the DRB.
I mean, I'm leaning towards that, you know, to just have it, and it seems maybe the subdivision regulations would be the place to have it, because it has to do with the subdivision. I know we did have some other questions the last time we met on this, and I don't know if we had any language changes. I know Bill had brought up a question about the parcel, once it's subdivided this way, that it cannot be subdivided again. We needed a definition of multifamily housing. And what else did I have in here? I think we were, were we still waiting to hear something on the mobile home parks?
We're still waiting.
Okay.
I only had that one, one subdivided, can't be further subdivided.
So, you know, I guess that would be my preference, for whatever that's worth, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we could solve all those issues except for a legal opinion on mobile home parks in a revised subdivision regulations document, which we could get back to you here in, within a month, I would think.
The biggest issue to overcome would be to, I guess you'd bring it back as a draft, but you have to go through the hearing process, too.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, but there, again, that's not terribly onerous either, in that, other than there's timeframes required to more meetings and such, so...
Right, yeah. No, we'd just want it for, you know, 15 days hence. Well, first, we have to pass it at the planning commission's floor, but I think that would be easily done. So, you know, knowing that these things move slowly, I still think that maybe just a little over a month isn't unrealistic.
Carl?
I tend to agree with Chris, that putting everything in one place is a logical approach, and I think asking the DRB is a courtesy, is not a bad idea, but I, I wouldn't really feel the need to waste too much time on that. But if it's going to take about a month to get it together, may as well ask the DRB anyway, so, sounds, sounds fine to me.
Ken?
We do have some members here.
What's that, just any other questions or...
No.
Is Sonny talking?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Ken? Question from the audience, Mr. Hans Cherry.
Yeah, I just, this sounds like it's going to take about a month to do. When you look at a subdivision bylaws, and you look at that particular document, you can still see a lot of strikeouts. In other words, it doesn't seem to be a final form. So, we just kind of encountered, let's say, a little hiccup in the road here where there was a possibility of conflict rewriting the bylaw in, let's say, the bylaw proper and not, it not agreeing with the subdivision bylaw. Is there any possibility to be buried in two documents?
That's, that's exactly where we're heading to.
Okay, because my feeling is, since you have so many strikeouts, it seems like it's in a draft form, anyway. Make an effort to consolidate it, if perchance, in hypothetically, you're wanting substantive change, maybe in two documents, you're basically looking at a format issue and just bind everything together and have one, one consolidated document.
Are you guys, Chris, Bill, are you guys looking at the same, is the document that Tom's referring to, is it what the one you're working off, is it one that looks like a draft?
No.
The subdivision...
Subdivision bylaw.
He may have a draft.
Yeah.
But it's not the one that's official.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, then that brings up another issue. With approval of the documents and having proper revisions dispensed to the appropriate parties, obviously, if I'm having a draft issue and I'm sitting on the DRB, I ask the question, why do I have a draft document?
You raise a good point.
So, again, it goes back to the fact, if we have one consolidated document with proper, and I would also encourage the board to consider, when doing revisions, what's common in, in, let's say, industry when we're talking about quality documents, you actually have either a header or footer with revision numbers, data revision, such that when one looks at the document, it can easily tell if you have the most current.
In recent years, Tom, in stuff that has been done, and I say recent, three, four, five years, I would guess, at least, that's been, has become standard practice. We have done, we have worked on standardizing those things. And it's fact of the time that I was on the planning commission, we already at that point had begun doing just exactly that, so... So, hopefully, the, hopefully, the document, you know, after I say that, hopefully, the document you're working from predates those times, so I don't have, haven't stepped my foot in them.
And I understand that this is, this is a undertaking, it's nothing of a small, small issue, but again, I'd like to see the board move forward in that direction so that we don't have these questions crop up, that we don't have this risk where we're conflicting between the two separate documents.
If I could respond? Tom, one of the projects that we're, we think we're right on the edge of at the planning commission is to reissue all town land use ordinances and bylaws in a single binder so that everybody gets everything in one place and consolidate them in the new website as well. You know, pending the outcome of this particular bylaw that we're talking about this evening. So, we have, you know, and this would be zoning bylaws, sign ordinance, subdivision regulations, and highway access ordinance, all in one binder. And so, it's our hope to accomplish that soon.
Is there any other question to Bill? Were you raising your hand? Did you have a?
No, I was done.
Oh, okay. All right. Again, as a matter of, I would tend to, by the way, concur with the thought process of combining them into one document. I think that makes a lot of sense in the long run, for all the reasons that have been discussed. So, that's where my head is at as well. So, I guess then, unless you have further comment, I guess then I need to know, or have some guidance, Margie, if you know, would this, would it be appropriate then from a procedural standpoint that we, the board officially acts to return this bylaw amendment back to the planning commission with the request that they incorporated into the subdivision regulations? Would that be the proper...
That, yeah. I wouldn't tackle a deletion tonight, because you hadn't warned that.
Right.
So, I think your choice is either to proceed to adopt with changes or, or minor changes or kick it back.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion? Well, I think that we have, it seems that we have a consensus, but I would wait for a motion from a member to return it to the planning commission with the idea of incorporating it into the subdivision regulations.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Is there any further discussion regarding that matter? Any other comments?
Wait a minute, the most, the actual motion? Karen was to... The motion is to return the open space subdivision language back to the planning commission for...
Warn me what I wrote.
What did you write?
I don't think I should have said, but I thought it was going to say, with the recommendation of the content being incorporated within the subdivision regulations.
That sounds great.
That sounds really good.
Just what I was going to say.
I say I'm sure.
And before we do that, I do thank the planning commission for this and for the suggestion how to actually solve the issues, or the issue with the conflicting language.
Okay, well, we can't get anything by you guys.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not...
Just one, since it was discussed last week and Karen brought up again, that there would be something added about once subdivided, the matter, the area cannot be again subdivided.
We will agree to that.
Okay.
And we'll have clarification from the town attorney regarding the mobile homes.
Then we'll be set to go.
Just to clarify that topic, because that was another one.
Okay.
All those in favor of returning the open space subdivision to the planning commission to have it incorporated into the subdivision regulations, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Standing. I missed most of it, so...
That would be a 401 vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
And I guess...
Bill Abigail.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I believe that closes the public hearing. I guess, do we need to have a motion to close? I think we need to have a motion to close the public hearing, or does that do it? I just want to make sure that we do it correctly.
I'm moved to close the public hearing, just to be sure.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If being none, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Standing.
Okay. So now we'll move into the regular, the regular portion of the select board meeting tonight. We'll start out with a conflict of interest statement. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with any item listed on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
All right. Minutes prior to meetings, minutes of March 18th, 2013.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding those minutes? Corrections, suggestions, clarifications?
They have good to me.
There being no further question or comment, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from March 18th, 2013, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have minutes from April 1st, 2013.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussions, questions?
I had a couple, wait a second, on page, I have page five, number nine. Carl's name is spelled wrong. If I have the right, yes. I'm surprised you didn't pick up on that one.
Sorry.
Carmen.
I answered anything.
And, let's see. And I just, just as a point of clarification, under number five, public comments, this was regarding the appointments that we made that night. And it stated past select board policy was to require interviews. It really was procedure. We have not established yet, although we're...
We are actively working on that.
Swiftly working on that. And then, let's see, just a little edit, under number 13, Mollinger posed, inquired, whether fewer bids, just remove one of those. And that, was it for me?
Carl?
No.
Ken? All right. There being no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes of April 1st, 2013, as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Standing.
401. I know I just do that, you probably already got that, Sandra, but... All right, lastly, we have meeting minutes for the March 2013 town meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions or concerns with those?
Yeah, I had, under present, and this has to do with spelling people's names, and I think for posterity, we want to get them right. Bill Fisk, there's no E at the end of his name. Jim Secor, there's no S.
Oh, I thought I corrected all those.
And it's Merton Snow, not Morton, as in the salt.
Yeah, yeah.
Terry Stacy with a Y.
Yep.
And then, if we go down, let's see, where was it? Under special recognition, Ben Hewlett, that's about the, I don't know, seventh line down, maybe, the Eagle Scout contributors, Ben Hewlett is H-U-L-E-T-T. And then, let's see, if we go down to the select board report, somewhere, okay, the second section where McClintock described projects, Peckham Industries, this says redrained, but it's reclaimed, that's a process for, yeah. And that was it for me.
Any other comments or suggestions or corrections that we found? There being no further comment, all those in favor of approving the March 213 town meeting minutes as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is warrants.
I have a, you've got some warrants, Craig, there were two warrants that had been signed by Karen Melinda, but they never made it to the board table.
Okay.
To the last meeting, they were, to Beamer's, some Beamer's warrants.
Okay, Beamer's warrant, check warrant, W-28RB, in the amount of $7,567.55.
Motion to approve, whoops.
Sorry. I was finished.
That's okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
This is for, looks like the quarterly?
Yes, we had a quarterly.
EB contribution.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving check warrant, W-28RB, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have check warrant, 28C, same, in the amount of $129.36.
That was also a Beamer's. That's Beamer's DC.
Yes, Beamer's.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? If being none, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. What is that?
Okay.
Okay. Check warrant, W-41PR, another Beamer's, in the amount of $129.36.
Motion to approve. Same amount, two different payroll weeks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If being none, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Payroll warrant, number 41, in the amount of $8,869.27.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant, number 41, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, payroll warrant, 40, in the amount of $6,532.18.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? If being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant, number 40, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
And your check warrant.
Okay, check warrant, number 28, in the amount of $64,370.47.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Items, larger items, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, the amount of $7,294.20. The Benton County Sheriff's Department, in the amount of $1,395.93. We have just over $1,900 total to William E. Daley, assuming for either sand or gravel.
Gravel. I think.
HL Fuels, two different invoices, one for $1,232.32, another for $2,618.30. Those are diesel?
Diesel and heating oil.
Okay. We have one to KAS Inc. for $3,058.38.
Side block.
Side block, okay. Lucky's Trailer Sales, in the amount of $7,185.
Truck body.
Truck body for the new...
Truck.
Okay. Mount Air Assessor, in the amount of $1,510.42.
Our professional appraiser.
MSK Engineering and Design, $14,500. And this is noted as pre-bond service and wastewater permit.
On the town, new town or a garage?
$1,000 to Bill Sweeney.
Yeah, who was that? Who's Sweeney? I didn't recognize that one.
I'll have to look that up, to see what department that was.
All right, we'll get back to that in a moment.
Yeah, it's less than, please, I didn't find it.
We have invoice to TAM Incorporated for $5,952.84, and then another for $6,258.74.
I know who Sweeney was. I think he came and did special welding on that loader, the surplus loader.
Is that two TAM invoices?
Yes, they're way behind.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the regular monthly?
Correct.
Okay, they just built, they just hit the same warrant, okay. And the last item above $1,000 is VRS Sales Limited for $1,117.
I think that's fire department.
All the rest of the items are under $1,000, various amounts. Any questions or discussions?
The MSK was, what was that?
That was the contract that we had signed.
For the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, for all the development work that they did, you know, plans.
Did that last with, and him?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If being none, all those in favor of approving check warrant, 28, in the amount of $64,370.47, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Let me just flip this around.
That's all of our warrants, correct?
That's it.
All right. Does any member of the audience want to make an announcement or discuss anything that is not on the agenda this evening? All right. Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Economic Development Committee, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I would like to talk about the sewer, and I'm just going to bring you through a quick timeline, because several of you haven't known what's been going on for the last 13, 15 years as far as the sewer project. So, back in about 2000, the Economic Development Committee was a bunch of volunteers that came together, and one of the first things that we did was hired a survey of the town to come up with what's called Shasbury's Future History, put out by Economic and Policy Resources out of Burlington, Michael Cream was the one that did it. I think everybody, if you don't have it, is that on the website?
Boy, I don't think so.
Okay, well, I...
From 2000?
Yeah, 2003.
2003. Oh, I know it's on the website.
Okay, I wouldn't, I'll make this available to everybody, but it's a very extensive research of what Shasbury was and what we should do to improve economic development and that sort of stuff. Strategy number one was, we needed a sewer system, okay? So, the next thing that we did was that the state of Vermont loaned us the money to have a company, an engineer company...
Stone?
Stone Environmentalists come in and gave us kind of like a boilerplate overview of what it would cost or what we could do for a sewer system. The agreement was that if we did go ahead and put in a sewer system, the money that they gave us, which was about $35,000, to do this would be added onto our bond, if not, if we didn't go through with it, it would be forgiven. So, obviously, it's been forgiven.
Well, it stays out there.
It stays out there, does it?
Yeah, but I was talking with them, what, two years ago? So, that's been 24 months now, but, no, I think as soon as they allow, this is typical for communities, it's going to take a long while to get the construction.
Very good, okay then. So the next thing that we did was, we conducted a survey, now that we had a number, and that, first of all, the engineers thought that the best thing was to do would be to hook onto Bennington. That can be done right in front of the feed store, because that is the, there is a, that's where North Bennington's Sewer Department, there is a line there, right, and so, by going down across Shasbury Flats and hooking onto it there would be feasible. Shas, Bennington, we approached them, they said they have capacity and all that sort of stuff. So, the next thing that we did was to hire the University of Vermont, a bunch of students to come up with a survey that was sent to every resident in the town of Shasbury, both in, obviously, in the sewer, what you would call the water district, but also in the rural areas, that sort of stuff, to find out what the general feeling was, did we want to keep pursuing this and that sort of stuff. We held a meeting, when was it, at the Shasbury School on May of 2007. The results of that were that most people didn't really want to, weren't in favor of it, it never was, we never pursued it anymore.
Most people were or weren't?
Were not.
Were not. Were not.
There was, as I recall, some reasonably good-sized numbers at that point, and I think that probably deterred a lot of folks.
You're talking millions of dollars, obviously.
There were, there was three alternatives offered, but the recommendation from Stone Environmental was the most expensive one, which at that time, I think, was $6 million.
And, you know, as you would imagine, I mean, because the whole town, I think, at the time, maybe some of the questions were, the whole town would be having to pay for this, as opposed to...
Well, there was a...
Or at least, excuse me, I think there was the perception on the part of a lot of folks in town that lived rurally, that, you know, why would I want to pay taxes for something that only folks in town could benefit? That's what I remember being a big issue.
Obviously, the people within the water district would be the ones that would pay the majority of it, but there was some talk about possibly the fact that by enhancing Shasbury, we could add a tax onto other more rural areas and that sort of stuff, but it wasn't though the entire town was going to pay the whole thing, but there was, there was just a lot of possibilities, but there just was not enough interest to pursue it.
In my run, it seemed like, I went to that meeting, and it seemed like there was an estimate of something like $3,000.
I can remember you talking about that.
I asked to hook up.
Yeah.
I said, I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
That's right.
I thought it was a pretty good deal.
But what you got to remember is just a boilerplate.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, it's just, so, here we are doing our town plan again. I read in the paper that Bennington is considering upgrades to their system. I just thought it would be a good idea, we're doing the town plan, Bennington's doing something to their sewer system, let's make sure that there's still an understanding between the two of us. So, Phil Asai went and saw Stu Herd, there's plenty of capacity, in fact, the upgrades that they're going to do isn't going to increase their capacity, but what it's going to do is cut down on a lot of what's called infiltration. They estimate over a million gallons a day of water just seeping into the system that isn't being, that is not wastewater, it's just from leaky pipes and that type of thing. So, there's no problem there. The biggest thing that I want to bring to you is that what they would like to do, and would, it would have to be this way if we did it, we would have to set up a sewer and water district whereby Shasbury would, would do all the billing and all that sort of stuff. Because if Bennington, and they have this trouble in what little bit of North Bennington, because they don't have control of the water, they can't, if somebody doesn't pay their sewer bill, they can't shut off the water because it's somebody else's water system. And so, the only recourse they have is to start marking up the highway that they're going to dig it up and shut the, close the pipe off. So, by having the water and sewer together, uh, you now have better control over the billing and that sort of stuff. The other thing that would be necessary is that they, there are two pumping stations on the Bennington system in the town of Shasbury. One is Coys, Coys Development has a pumping station that pumps to the main line, and then further at the end of Hawks Avenue, or right in the middle of Bank Street Extension and Hawks Avenue, there's another pumping station. They would be brought up to standards, um, and they would then be turned over to this sewer and water associate, whatever you want to call it. And that, it would be their responsibility from then on. So, I would just like to go to the planning board and say, I think the town plan ought to kind of spell this out if, that, if it's necessary that we kind of have this already thought about in the future. And that's, I didn't want people to think that we were off on our own tangent and that sort of stuff, but, okay?
Oh, it makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense, and I think that, um, I think the board, I think if we could go on the table, but I think the board, obviously, would support that, bringing that information that she presented to the, to the Planning Commission to incorporate into the, uh, town plan document.
Okay.
Is there any, are there consensuses to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, one little question, what area, has it changed, the area that they wanted to include in where the sewer would be? Would it be just a village area, or is it expanded, that you think?
The highest priced, uh, plan was the Village as well as Harvest Hill, um, in the North Bennington section of Shasbury.
Yeah.
So, and so those were the two areas that would, um, be best served with having a sewer system.
Well, Harvest Hills, it wouldn't hurt at that.
Right, yes, that's right, what I meant, it would be best served because of drainage problems and septic's problems that they have, have the potential for.
Yeah.
And I think, I think maybe the point too is that this was just a discussion, they didn't actually reopen the, look at it any further, you know, what they wanted to do. It was more, this was just a communication with Bennington, just to see if, if what we discussed in theory, you know, if we put one in, would they still be interested or be able to, you could take the lead.
Sure.
But to answer Ken's question also, I think it also included Twitchell Hill, and also there was the Daniels Road, there was a thought that maybe that might be developed more in the future so that would be able to include Daniels Road, and also would be going down, uh, through Perrin Acres, uh, to pick up all the houses on Perrin Acres and that type of thing, too, on its way to, to Bennington.
Are you just looking for wording in the plan that says that this is available as a resource?
Yes.
Or that this is a goal?
I believe, I believe it is a goal.
I think the language in there already, there is some mention of this.
Absolutely.
We reworked it the last time.
That's true.
This is just more of an update that it's still, yeah, that it's still, it is still a conceivably viable option for connection, should the town pursue it. And, um, you know, that it is potentially a, a, a goal to, for the economic development of the community.
But I think also the language that you would have to, both, you'd have to create, both the water and sewer authority, that type of thing, that would, that would take on some.
Right, exactly, is that, as you know, the town plan, it kind of is like a vision statement, if you will, for, uh, things that we might see in the community or like to see, you know, going forward.
And I'd be glad to, um, I'm going to make this available to everybody, I think everybody should at least have access to this, I'll run out some copies and.
I have one, so you know, yeah. I can, we can make copies down here.
Okay.
Can you scan it so that it can?
Scan it?
And then post it on the web?
I'm assuming that we don't have an electronic copy yet anymore at this point. Okay, that's fine, I just, at least that way if I make, make anything do it, I would make it smaller, that's the only thing.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Okay, and.
I'll get it right back to you.
Be glad to, uh, be glad to come back any other time when you have more time, we'll go over the survey and some of the, some of the points that were brought up, why it didn't go through and things like that.
Okay.
I just.
One quick, you know, related to, it's sewer, not sewer, but it's water, and I'm thinking about the, when you're talking about like Twitchell Hill and, you know, extending up those areas, Daniels Road. Um, we have been notified by North Bennington, in terms of the water, that it's very limited, apparently, in terms of how much more we can take from them. So, unfortunately, although it would be expensive to run the lines up there, that's one of the things that Joe Herman, our Water Superintendent, keeps emphasizing to us, is this letter that we got from North Bennington that states, you know, there's not a whole lot more room for growth in terms of the water lines.
Okay.
So, just, you know, you may be very familiar with that, I just wanted to, and that's something that he keeps pressing with the Planning Commission because that's another goal, is to extend water, and that has been a goal. And it may not be something that we can do to the extent that we'd like to be able to do it.
Again, it's still driven by.
Dollars fall from heaven, yeah.
Still driven by, uh, people wanting to buy, which, or build, which hasn't been a huge thing the last few years. Well, fortunately, depending on your point of view. Thank you very much for making that presentation to us, and for taking the lead on that.
Um, is there any other, uh, public comment on any items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay, then the next item on the agenda tonight is, um, cash flow projections.
One, one, Frank, did we do announcements from the board yet, around this time?
No. Does any member of the board have an announcement? Like Ken, Bill?
Yeah, that's why I brought it up.
Oh, you have something?
Yeah, I mean, this, honestly, this probably could come up under other business, but there's later items on the agenda that will be impacted by this, so I'll address it under announcements, and if you want me to push it back, I will. This is going to end up being my last meeting here on the board. I was accepted into grad program at RPI, which is going to create a, a severe scheduling conflict for me. Um, starting in May, I'm going to have classes on Monday nights, and I looked, I looked at it, and my first thought was, the people of the town voted me in for three years, I have a responsibility to the town to fulfill this three years. My first thought was, should I, should I ask the board to move meetings to a different night to try to accommodate this? And the reality is, before selecting this program, I, I met with not only a lot of professors at RPI, but also quite a few students there, just about what would be entailed in this program. And I think there's a very good likelihood that you would get an email from me, you know, let's say we moved to Thursday or whatever, you'd get an email from me on Thursday of, I'm jammed up. I can't get here. Can't get here, and it, the town deserves better than to have me ask everybody to move things around to accommodate me when I don't know if I will still be able to fulfill my duties to the, to the best of my ability with those accommodations. So, I would rather put the town in a position to have somebody who can be here every night without having to move meetings and without having much of, much of a conflict. I did, after, a lot of this has happened pretty quickly because I didn't see my schedules till, till Friday of last week. If I had had Mondays open, I would have given it a shot, but without them, I really can't. So, I did reach out for Mitch Race, just because he had run for an open position, and he would still be interested in sitting on the board, so I would make the recommendation to the select board that they would appoint him in my absence. But I, I wanted to share that because we have things later on the agenda tonight that will be impacted by this, by this decision, so.
Okay.
I apologize to the people of the town for not being able to fulfill my term, but given the circumstances, I think it would be better for me to step back than to try to move all the, all the pieces to make it work.
Could you just tell me who you recommended?
Mitch Race.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I know, I'm going to speak for the board, even though I'm sure they'll have their own comments, but, um, first of all, congratulations on getting in, that's a, that's an accomplishment.
Thank you.
Great job, we are, on the other side, we're going to be, sorry to miss you, sorry to lose you. You've brought a lot of stuff to the table, comments and, and, and intellectual insight that's been appreciated since you've been on the board. We will miss you, but, um, thank you for letting us know. Um, we will, we do have, um, there are statutory requirements of how we need to handle that, we need to follow through though, but thank you for.
I, I understand, I, I just, once again, before, as I've been working with all this information this weekend, I said, oh my gosh, what are they going to do? And I wanted to make sure there was at least someone who wanted to sit on this board, because I know sometimes it's not always easy to find.
Yeah, so, yeah, we actually have.
We just have to advertise.
We have to advertise and go through the process, but.
No.
Thank you for that, and not that, I don't think Mitch would be a great candidate as well, but there is a process to go through and.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
So, see now, let's keep it a secret, we won't tell Carl what just happened. Um, Bill just indicated that he would no longer be, would not after this meeting be able to continue his service to the town or the board due to a educational opportunity that he's, uh, has, so.
I thought I had that shut off, sorry about that.
So, anyways, um, that's, that's what we're looking at, so it looks like we're going to be, um, working through the process to, uh, bring another board member on, starting fairly immediately, so. He, he said, he mentioned it, uh, early on, because there were some other items leaving the agenda that his departure could affect, so.
Oh, gracious.
So, that's why he brought it up now, which was, which was good. Thank you. Carl, do you have any announcements?
No, no, thank you.
Um, first of all, I'm going to be really sorry to have you not be here.
Thank you.
And I completely agree, though, when you have those opportunities, you got to take them. But you've done a wonderful job, and I've really enjoyed working with you.
Enjoyed working with you guys too.
Yeah.
Um, the, let's see, announcements, Greenup Day is, um, actually the same day as the Tour of the Dragons, which is.
It's going to be interesting.
The first Saturday in May, so I can hardly believe it, but that's like three weeks away. Um, and anybody that would like to help can certainly call me, um, I am the Greenup Coordinator. Um, the bags should be available within about a week. They'll be distributed, as we've always distributed them, to, um, Pollens, Whitman's, the Town Transfer Station, here at Coal Hall, um, and where else, in the Country Store. There will be notices in the paper, there'll be posters around town, um, there are certain drop-off spots for folks that live rurally, that want to clean their roads. We will be set up with a tent that day from probably nine until two. We do need to ask Tam Margie to have a dumpster out here. And the Town Road Crew has historically been wonderful in going around town the week following to pick up. If people, again, are picking up a lot of road trash, and it certainly is out there, it always is, um, then there, again, there will be certain drop-off spots to leave that, and the Road Crew will wonderfully go around and, and pick up some of that, if you cannot get down to the transfer station or to Coal Hall that day. And there will once again be a little scavenger hunt. These very small little ladybugs will appear beside trash around town, and adults, it's primarily for the kids, so if you find one, you might find a child who's a bug. But they can bring those back to, either to the school, um, or here to Coal Hall the day of, uh, Greenup Day. But if they do it over the weekend and we're not here, if they do it on Sunday and they find a little ladybug, they can, again, bring it to school or bring it to Coal Hall, and there will be a prize. So, that's it for me.
Margie?
Well, I wanted to remind people about the Tour of the Dragons by grace, the same day as Greenup Day, and the fact that they are also looking for Shasbury volunteers. It's going to be a busy day. And the route is primarily along the east side, um, Cedar Mill, more else, Terry, did you tell you? Maple Hill, and then East Road, yeah. And we do get a, a little bit of payback from the tour itself, if we get a certain number of volunteers. So, see me or email me, uh, I have the Volunteer Coordinator contact information, and, uh, can put you in touch with her. Then, the only other announcement is the House of Hazardous Waste Collection Day is two weeks earlier than usual, it's April 27, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And, once again, we have that coinciding with free tire drop-off for Shasbury residents only, but that's also from eight to four, that's the, um, or actually, seven to four, that'll be the whole, the whole time the transfer station is open. The proverbial not-to-brings would be publicized, uh, in the paper, but it, just remember, latex paint is not accepted, uh, and batteries and battery packs, uh, certain types. So, we will be getting that out in our publicity. The other question mark is to watch publicity for how to handle fluorescent bulbs. We're looking at an alternative way to having the actual Clean Harbors contractor take those away. We would still be collecting them that day, but, uh, stay tuned.
What's the batch number of tires at each family tree?
Is it four?
Four.
Four for household maximum number of?
No rims.
No rims.
And what is the status with regard to used oil?
Used oil can be brought in.
It can be?
Yes.
Yes. It can be.
Yes.
Anything else? None for me, all right. Next now, Bill, next item is our budget year-to-date and cash flow projections.
The first document I'd like to call your attention to is the General Fund Estimated Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. Um, I apologize for the font size, but we try to keep it all to one page, and actually use the summary captions that are found in our more detailed, uh, financial statements. What this report does is the left-hand column presents the annual budget that was adopted at the, uh, the town meeting for this fiscal year. Uh, to the immediate right, as of the actual results as of April 11th, which was the, the time that we started on this, this, uh, report. An estimate to complete what it will be at the end of the year. So, now, the, uh, the third column represents what we anticipate the activity will be for the full fiscal year. And then the far-right column is the variance from budget. Unbracketed numbers are favorable, if a number has brackets around it, it means an unfavorable variance. This is presented in the format of a financial statement, and it is consistent with the way I reported the operating statements in the town report, and is consistent with the way, uh, generally accepted accounting principles would have you report town governments. What, uh, what's a little, uh, different, and I point out to you, is revenues and expenditures are those that represent transactions between the town and someone else, as opposed to a transfer between one fund and another. When we get down to that, we have a, we have essentially what we call. When we get down to that, we have essentially what we call the difference between the excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures before the operating transfers. And then we bring in the operating transfers or take them out, as the case may be, to come down to what you might colloquially call the bottom line, if you will, which is the net change for the year, the net change in fund balance for the year. And then we add the beginning fund balance to that to come to the projected ending fund balance. You know, as you can see from the budget, we plan to have essentially expend about $124,000 of our beginning fund balance, and that would have brought the fund balance down to about $196,000 in round numbers. Actual results, in terms of revenues, we are right now very close at April 11th to our budgeted revenue. We're about $18,000 below budgeted revenue. On the expenditure side, as you can see, there's more variation. For example, in general government, you know, we're at a lower percentage of the total budget. As we get down through the various government functions, you can see that we're still coming out with significant remaining budget appropriation left. We expect that by the end of the year, that we will be looking at approximately a $325,000 expenditure in our general government expenditures, which is roughly a $16,000 variance from the budget, and it's a favorable variance. So we're projecting underspending by about $16,000 in that category. I'd like to point out that a large part of the work in this is the understanding of the operating considerations, and that's where Margie really has contributed tremendously. I mean, I can look at numbers and I can produce numbers in reports, but, you know, she has the knowledge of what's going on and on the ground, if you will, and that knowledge is really invaluable. That's what has to be reflected in any kind of estimate of operating results. She and I had some interesting discussions and a lot of fun putting this together, if I can use the word "fun," right, Margie? When we get to public safety, as you can see, we've spent 85 of $120,000 budgeted. We expect that by the end of the year, we will spend about $116,000 in public safety, and we will be under budget by about $4,000 overall. I'd also point out that we anticipate that each month for the remainder of the fiscal year, we'll come back to you with an update of this report, so as we get closer, you know, some of the uncertainties will go away and will become, hopefully, more precise as we go along. With respect to public works, we're anticipating that in the major categories here, we will be at approximately $912,000 actual expenditures at June 30, '13 compared with a budget of $958,000. One of the big differences there, obviously, is the highway garage and the amount that's will be spent compared to what the budget is. There's a favorable, in the sense of level of expenditures variance there of about, round numbers, $27,000, and you can see what the others are as well in that category. Planning and development, pretty close down budget, about a $2,700 difference. Nothing in community appropriations, we're essentially right on except for the items that weren't approved. The county tax is very close, and debt service expenditures were a little more than were budgeted. So overall, we set the budget, the townspeople voted the budget, that would effectively have an excess of expenditures over revenue of about $199,000. At this point, we're looking at the end of the year, fiscal year, we will have an excess of expenditures over revenue of about $61,000. So we think the performance will be about $138,000 better than budgeted at that line. Operating transfers, we're anticipating transferring in in total about $229,000 and transferring out what was budgeted of $87,500. So again, at the end of the year, we expect that our excess of revenues and transfers in over expenditures and transfers out will be a positive $81,000. If we add that to the fund balance, we're looking at a projected fund balance at this point in time of $401,000. And that would be, if we achieve that, that would be a $205,000 favorable variance from what was included in the budget.
I just want to explain that the operating transfers in figure represents the full amount of the fire engine purchase, so that's why you have, we had budgeted 59 coming in, but we actually booked $84,480 there. We're under, we had a $16,000 reserve fund transfer in for the brush truck, but I'm only predicting we're going to need to bring in about 10. The garage reserve transfer in, we had $45,000, but I'm only predicting 30. That depends on what the Facilities Committee and the Select Board and the new Garage Committee decide to do as to whether or not we need additional engineering services between now and June 30th, so I'm allowing, I think, $5,000 there extra. Similarly, with sidewalk, difficult to exactly figure what we're bringing in, but I figured we'd be transferring in the full $15,000 by June 30th because they've already built an excess of $10,000. And just make a note that it's difficult to match the reserve operating transfers in for, we've got garage and sidewalk funds coming in up above, but we're counting for garage and sidewalk expenses in one line item as an expense. And I think that going forward, I'd like to see if we can, Bill and I talked about maybe breaking that out. It's under the garage category. It's under professional services, and so that's, there's a $60,000 expense booked there to cover both major projects. And it would be nice to break that out.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
So that was, sorry.
And there's also a transfer in for paving reserve that was unbudgeted as well, and that's another large number, and that brings that to operating transfers in to $229,000. In fact, the real deal, the paving transfers in were about $64,000, round numbers, that's almost all of the variance.
Okay, there you go. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand this, the fund balance projection. So I'm looking at our fund balance of, from last year, which was the $320, which is what, okay, so I see what we're doing, all right. So we've taken from that $320 for the budget going forward, we're applying $120,000 towards next year's budget.
No, this year's budget, the fiscal year 2013 budget. We plan to use, in the budget, to balance revenues and expenditures, if you look on the town report, we use the figure of $124,519 or $520. And so what we did when we did that implicitly, what that means is we planned to spend that much more than we took in as revenue, and we were going to finance that by reducing the fund balance.
Right, but we were projecting to have a $200,000, well, a $200,000 fund balance, and now this would be $280,000, is that right? At the end of the year?
The end of this fiscal year.
Yeah.
I think our discussion really occurred after the budget for this fiscal year, and we were talking about the budget for 2014, fiscal year ending 2014.
Right, I think that's what I'm getting mixed up with.
That's what I think--
Because the budget that we presented to the townspeople in March--
Yes.
--showed us, I thought, with $100 and something going into next year's budget--
Right.
--this current year.
Right.
And we were projecting, I thought at that time, well, so essentially, if we've budgeted $120,000 or whatever it is to go into fiscal year 14's budget, what will we then, what are you projecting we will have left over in our fund balance?
Well, our fund balance, I'm projecting, will be the $401,000. Now, if we budgeted $190,000, the difference would be effectively the remaining fund The 2014 budget, from memory, I think we plan to use approximately $200,000 of the carryover fund balance, is that?
No, I thought we were only putting $120,000 into.
That's my--
Okay, well, that's right, that's right. It would be, because we were looking at the $320--
Right.
--and planning we're going to move it down to $200,000.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, we were anticipating that we would end this fiscal year somewhere--
In the $320, I thought.
The $320, yes.
And now, what you're projecting is actually more like $400,000.
Right, and that is obviously a projection with a quarter of the year left to go, and it may not--
Right.
--come to pass.
Right, right. I was just trying to understand.
So basically, what that's saying is ultimately would be is we're coming out about, I'm not being-- I don't know. We're coming out further ahead, we're having it so far--
It's good news.
It's good news, yeah.
No, well, it's not bad news.
Looks like we're spending, looking like we'll end up spending less money than we had anticipated, which is always good.
Yes.
As long as everything's getting done.
That's right.
Does any of that relate to the failure of our, being able to move forward with the garage?
Well, that does have an impact, yes, that does have an impact--
So far.
--because we're not budgeting expenditures for the garage at the level, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at about a $27,000, less of actual expenditures than were planned. So that's just one place where that appears.
Any further questions on that report?
The other report you have is just essentially a simple cash flow report, and the point of this report is to show what the cash position was on Monday morning and then work through what we plan to expect to receive and to expend between now and the end of the fiscal year, and based on that, we're looking at a estimated cash balance of $322,000 at the end of the fiscal year, June 30. The major item coming out of this, of course, is the balance of the school taxes, which, you know, we collect school taxes, we pay to the schools, Mount Anthony and Shaftesbury, what we collect as of a date that's 20 days after the tax due date, and then we have 120 days to collect additional taxes and to settle with the school. The school, we've had conversations with the school, they provide us with a cash flow report that's based on preliminary numbers, and, you know, I've had, essentially negotiated with the business office at the schools to pay this additional amount, which we think is approximately where the net obligation of the town to the schools will be at the end of the fiscal year. Their number's slightly higher, their number does not reflect changes in the grant list after September 1st, does not reflect any, the second payment that was made by the state for income sensitivity adjustments as of September 15th. So all that's calculated into how much, the business manager and I agreed on this number, so that's the big number there. On the revenue side, you know, delinquent taxes are an important consideration, and the other one is the highway aid. Today, our bank account was credited today with the $39,000 highway aid from the state, 39, 842, actually. The other revenue items are as we estimate they will be, and the expenses are the same, and we plan to end up with 322,079. And, you know, we expect that unless something changes materially, we will be approximately at that cash position at the end of the fiscal year.
Perfect.
Questions?
Okay.
That's great. Thank you both.
Thank you very much for bringing us up to date. And bringing good news, even though you'd have brought bad news if there wasn't. You didn't, so you're a bearer of good tidings.
A bearer of good tidings.
Don't kill the messenger when it turns around.
Actually, with, my apologies in advance to Terry, I'm going to make you wait a little bit, apologize. I'm going to ask that the board that we temporarily recess the Select Board meeting so that we have the opportunity to go into a brief Water Board meeting while we can take into account the time and the services of our Water Superintendent. Can I have a motion to recess this meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Are being none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I guess I'll defer to the Chair of the Water--
Okay. Well, call the Water Board meeting to order. Yep. The first announcement is congratulations to Joe Herman, who is here on his birthday, I want you to know. So talk about, you know--
Dedication, man, dedication.
Exactly. He's nothing but not dedicated. Are there any other announcements from the board?
No.
Does anyone have a conflict of interest?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments regarding water issues? All right, why don't we take up the minutes of 8:00 first? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Charles, seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, comments? Does everyone have a chance to review?
I noted nothing.
All right, I'm hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Billy abstains. So 40, how do you do that? 40 and 1?
Yeah.
I know Sandra will get it right. Okay, so we are here tonight so that Joe can just walk us through an issue that we have with a delinquency, a longstanding delinquency that goes back to 2011, I think at this point.
Can I give you one?
Pardon?
Can I give you one?
This property, we're looking at a bill of $1,798. There'll be another approximately $700 due on this account. Situation is that it is a, it's a landlord-owned building. Joe has attempted to work out payment plans with the owner of the property, and that has not been successful. This is a property that's actually up for, it actually sold in a tax sale last September, and that will be realized, I think it's in the middle of September this year.
September 13.
September 13. There's a one-year waiting period, but in the meantime, we're owed water. And so, Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, as you can see on the sheet there, I'll not mention no names, but as you can see on the sheet there, $1,700 right now. We had just read the meter Saturday.
Closer to 18, isn't it?
Pardon me?
Closer to 18, yeah.
Yeah, 18. We just read the meter Saturday, and there's another $631 going on top of that. In that house, there's eight people living there. Or, I'm sorry, eight, 10, 10 people living in there.
Is it rented?
It's rented, yes. Person up top there is the one that owns the house. They live in Manchester. We have spoke to him quite a bit of times. As you see down on the penalty, down on the sheet there, that is when a delinquent sheet is sent out for a shut-off notice, okay? Each time, we have spoken to the person two or three times to let him, you know, get the bill paid. No response. One time, I had Karen talk to him, and--
So you could get hold of him.
Yeah, they just, they would talk, they'd talk to us, but they just don't come up with it. with it. Like I say, with the small children and anything else, we have to go through the delinquent or through the rules and regulations of the state for shutting off. What I'm requesting the board to give me a thing to have sent a registered letter to the owner and plus the tenant to solve this bill.
So essentially, there's statute language that we need to follow if we're going to shut off a water user. So the letter would go out certified mail to both the owner of the property and the tenant, and there's a certain period of time after that letter goes out that they have to either pay up or contact the superintendent to come up. And Joe has been very accommodating with users in terms, and very successful in setting up payment plans, but that just has not happened in this situation.
As far as the taxes, as far as I know, he has not budged on them neither, so.
That is a separate, whole separate process. That's a separate process, yeah.
Right, but I just wanted to see if they had done anything towards that or not.
Does the timeframe run from the receipt of the notice?
Pardon me?
So there's a certain timeframe that runs after.
You certify mail is sent. Right, we have 30 days on the bill. After 30 days, they get a delinquent notice that the order is done. When it ends up with the delinquent list or the delinquent letter, it ends up to be 45 days, because it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday is not considered.
They're giving me more information than I need.
So, Joe, when you send out the delinquent notice.
When you send the certified letter that you're going to send.
They have 45 days?
Forty-five.
From what?
From the day we send it out.
The day we send it? The day they receive it?
The day we send it. The post dated and marked on that date.
So if you send it tomorrow, basically, beginning of June, they could be shut off, they didn't pay or respond?
Now, I looked, we looked very carefully at the rental housing codes, and I asked the town attorney to rule on this. There is no limitation as to when we can send the owner and the tenants a letter, certified letter of water shut-off notice, okay?
Initially, we were concerned over the winter that there might be some kind of regulation that, especially because there were children in the home, that you could not shut water off, but as it turns out, there isn't any language that limits.
No limitation, no seasonal limitation whatsoever. So, basically, the landlord has to find them housing or pay up.
Or an alternative, so they would have to bring in bottled water or something like that.
I mean, that's the way Bennington goes about it as well.
And interestingly enough, there is the same process that you can go through for water that we go through for delinquent taxes. So we could actually have a property put up for, you know, delinquent water as they put up, you know, delinquent tax.
Basically, there's a lien on the property.
Yep, it goes up for sale, and it's the same process. But, you know, right now, tonight, what we're looking for is approval from the board for Joe to go forward in following the statute language with the notice going out to the homeowner and the tenant for a shut-off.
And that would be, and I'm assuming with that approval would be that if there was no resolution that on the 40, after the timeframe had expired, that the water would be shut off.
That's right.
And there are children in the house?
Yep.
How many?
Six.
Six.
Six there, and there's, they have two more on the weekend. He's been married before, he has four, she has four, so there's eight total kids.
But this is now going back to 2011.
And they're all minors when we say.
Oh, yes, yep.
By the time the water would be shut off, it would be, it would be June, is what we're saying at this point, so he wouldn't really be much of an issue. Whether or not the statute impacts, that that would impact my decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, if everyone feels their questions have been answered, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we have a certified letter sent advising that the water will be shut off unless paid in full. Second. In accordance with state requirements.
And Kenny, you seconded?
Yeah. I'll notify the board if anything does come up before then.
Just one, is, are there any comments regarding the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Sorry, it passes unanimously, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
If anything comes up before then, I'll notify the board on it.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go, thank you very much, Joe. I hope Evelyn has her birthday cake waiting for you. You're working?
Yeah, just came from work, I said come on. I get the two shots in one day.
What has gone?
Thank you.
Take your things again.
Motion to return for recess?
Motion to.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda, the select board, this evening will be opening bid openings for highway equipment.
Okay, we have excavator bids and one-ton truck bids. The first bid I'm opening is from Cat Milton. Jeffrey Slade. Excavator bid.
That's a propaganda.
All right, Milton Cat lists all our specs. Discounted price per the above specifications. Now, this is for a 2013 Caterpillar, so it's a new excavator, zero hours. Okay, discounted price, $203,000. Less $25,000 for our 1998 Caterpillar 212.
Less 23, did you say?
Twenty-five thousand for a total net purchase price of $1,708, one?
178.
One?
That would have been a real bargain.
178? And that was?
Cat Milton, Milton, Milton Cat. Okay, so we have 178, Cat Milton. All right. This is from Pete's Equipment in northern Vermont, and they've sent me several packets. The bid clarification that went out at the middle of the week was that we were trading, that had not been explicit, so we had to go back to all bidders, so they rebid.
Tyvek stuff does not.
Well, I wondered about doing this before the meeting, and then I figured, no.
Marty, you know, if you'd done it before the meeting, somebody wouldn't have followed procedure, and you would have opened a bid there.
Okay, now, so, submittal number one for Pete's inclusive of trade would be, now, this is for a Hyundai 213 excavator, and we're going to have to look at the specs.
A 200, a 2013?
Yes.
Or the number is 213?
And now, they've got a full machine warranty included. I don't remember noting that in here.
Was that part of their spec?
No.
No?
I have to look back and see. Trade-in for the Cat 212.
Two-year full machine warranty, two-year.
That included two-year?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll look at the tabulate bids. The trade-in for our Cat 212 is $12,000, so our net purchase for the Hyundai would be
Say it one more time?
Now, they have bid on a couple different sizes of machines. This is, and this is where Terry and I and a board member, whomever, is going to have to look at this. Hyundai, 22,000, here's the model number of the Hyundai, R170W-9. So Ken, if you wanted to look that up tonight.
Yep.
Two-piece boom, seven-foot, three-inch arm.
Do they have the specs on the weight?
Operating weight is 41,500. Cummins engine.
Does it have a blade on it?
Thirty-six inch digging bucket, sixty inch hydraulic tilt ditching bucket.
Maybe we can, you know, yeah, we have to utilize this. Yeah, let's just do the numbers, and then we all need to sit together.
So that was one of the machines.
Figure out what meets our specs.
They've come in with a 212 Hitachi.
2012?
2012 Hitachi Z190-3 with 350 hours, front blade, et cetera, et cetera, for a net after trade of $174,000. And they've given us an option.
What do they give you for a trade?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
He's being cagey, he is not breaking it out.
Oh. What was, what was the Cat Milton product that was being offered, what was the model?
316M.
Say again? 316.
316M, as in Michael.
What's, what's the make?
Cat.
Oh, it's a Cat, it's a Cat, yeah. So that's the John Deere. 212 Hitachi with 350 hours.
But we don't know what the actual cost of this machine was.
He's got 250 hours, he's got more metal than the other one.
Was the, was the Cat Milton new?
Yeah, zero hours. This is separate from financing, this is just equipment purchase. Okay, here is the fourth, we have Woods CRW Corporation out of Williston, Vermont, for a new 2013 Volvo EW160D wheeled excavator. Sell price, $182,650. They're giving us a $5,000 trade on the Cat 212 for a net of trade of $177,650. Now, I believe that these other, see, these other Pete's Equipment bids, they had come in before the amendment on the trade, so.
Did our solicitation specify new or used, permit used, offer free?
Our, yes.
$1400.
Correct. Excuse me, my bag's out. The solicitation read, actually, the solicitation said Terry used low hours, $38,000, $40,000 pound class.
It was supposed to say new used.
New used, new used.
What I found, Carl, was, hey, around 1,000 hours, 1,200 hours, the machine was still about $142,000.
That was a pound, pounds. Thirty-eight to.
Up to 2,000 hours.
I was going to say this is a 41.
So you got to invest in, I mean, the beginning of the machine.
We have in Pete's.
Well, Pete's Equipment was the one vendor which said we didn't need a machine so heavy. So I think what they've.
But they gave us one heavier.
They have other suggestions for smaller machines, so I will ask the board later. I'd like, should we consider that, should we open it?
Should we open?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should open everything we've got, I mean, if it's.
Well, this, these came in earlier.
How do you know it's in if you don't open it?
I will open it.
Yeah, I would think that we should open it, we can always eliminate them if, no, if you can get into the envelope.
These were rubber tire machines, right?
They what?
They are rubber tire machines.
You're asking me?
Guess we're going to find out in a moment.
They're real, they're real. I would say that.
So this was a prior quote on a, let's see if it's the same machine.
It's a Hyundai.
It was the same machine. Net investment of $165,727.
Yeah, that's the same number that about the trade-in, isn't it?
Well, he gave us a $12,000 trade-in.
Yeah, so that's exactly the difference between his initial quote and this one is the difference.
153.
Right, 153.
Reformat it.
Yeah, so that, one includes a trade-in, one doesn't, so that's the same bid.
Yeah. And then, same machine, all right.
Would you do the budget for this, Marty?
Um, I can't answer that right now, I've got to go into my notes. We budgeted a debt service payment of $38,000 on both, and so I think we're coming in within that range.
I think we, about 240.
That's what was what we based on, between the two machines?
That's what the original price was.
No, that was just for the.
I can give you that answer in just a moment.
Yes, sir.
That's a bigger machine, I'm thinking.
Yeah, we have, it was an R21 versus an R17. So if we wanted a different machine, if this heavier, is this a heavier machine, it says operating weight, oh, it's 46,000 pounds versus 41,000, this is a heavier machine, but that was in the category that I think you were looking for, Terry, but the net investment for this is $181,247.
I thought we were looking at between $38,000 and $40,000.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I wasn't remembering correctly, yeah. So this is really too big a machine.
So one of, so the other one came in at 41,500, is that too big?
No, that's the, we said a 40,000 pound class because they're not all the same weight, they, they're over than 1,000 pounds.
So that's it for excavator, okay, I think.
So we will, between now and the next meeting, we'll meet, we'll go through, we'll have a comparison on the bids, make sure they meet the. have a comparison for, on the bids, make sure they meet the bid specs.
Well, yeah, I'd like to know what the board would like to do. Um, yes, so, we consider bids, uh, May 6th would be our next meeting. We would do the award at that time. And how would you like the bids to be tabulated and reviewed? Well, we, Terry, we're gonna have to look and go down.
We'll count Thursday morning quick.
Yeah.
That's fair.
The Highway Liaison Award, May 6th.
Next, we have the truck bids.
This is the flat bid?
Yes.
One ton or?
One ton.
This is just carriage chassis.
Oh, okay.
This isn't the standard.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to bid on a new Ram 5500 chassis cab truck for your town. As you can see from the attached, the retail price is 50,000, 54,290 dollars, but our price is going to be 44,877 dollars. 12 weeks from date of order for delivery. 18,750 pounds G V W. So, our net price is 44,877. Foster Motors.
That was a Ram 5500.
I think one of the other approaches we did was to put the names prior to a meeting. Okay, Goss Dodge out of South Burlington. We propose offering 2013 Dodge 5500 CRW cab. If ordered and received by, to the 29th of April, we would have it delivered by July Otherwise, if we don't order, we would, it would come a little later. Okay, delivered to Sheffsberry, Vermont. The price would be 46,149 dollars. Add 350 for space, time, space, tire and wheel?
Spear tire, spear tire.
Oh, spear. Tire and wheel. 2013 located 5500 crew cab as per attached price, 49, what? Are we getting two bids?
Well, one's a 2013, one's a 2013.
Here's a 2013.
Yeah, subject to a price sheet, okay.
Want a Dodge, you want a Ford maybe?
We're gonna have to look at this and ask for clarification.
Okay.
I have a question. Do those prices include tax?
That's a good question. We're tax, we're tax exempt.
Are we taxed again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We never even thought about it, but it's, yeah.
Okay. Good. That's why I said it may be a dumb question. Use-to-service contract.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Well, that's our bid opening.
Are all the car bodies?
No, now, I did say to Terry this afternoon that people walked in and delivered a lot of these, and I had gone to the mailbox this morning, so, that would've been Saturday's mail. So, I'm still, I have a question mark about whether there is a, an outstanding bid on the truck maybe squished into our mailbox.
It would've met today's deadline.
That would've met today's deadline.
Okay. So, we'll know that tomorrow morning.
That's right. Yeah. All right, so, we'll tabulate and then award the bid, May 6th.
Sounds good.
Greg?
Yes.
Um, was there any, uh, thought to getting a, a machine with 3, 4,000 dollars on it?
With how many hours?
3 or 4,000.
That was not what we started out with. No, we were thinking, um, we'd, we'd set it up initially, or maybe I'll let Terry answer that, but basically was we were looking at something, not necessarily, it didn't have to be new, but we were looking at something newer, you know, with less hours. Terry, do you want to elaborate any further on that or the...
Well, just like, well, Carl, we originally started out going for a used machine of a few thousand, maybe four or five years old. The machines four years old with 2,000, 2,500 hours on them were within 15,000 to 18,000 dollars of what we could buy a brand new one for, or a very new used one. And for financing rates, it didn't make sense for the town not to go approach that way.
Historically, the interest rates are much higher on, on used equipment, just as they are for cars. Is that correct, Margie?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
The interest rates for loans on used equipment would be higher than for new equipment. Is that, would that be accurate or no?
Aye. Who would answer that?
Because I guess we've not bought used before, but...
I understand the reason, because they wouldn't have the same values and the banks would have to cover the same higher interest.
Obviously, in the case, I don't have that in, but just I was buying a used car as you, you...
Well, no, I mean, I understand that, but I, I did some checking, and I went and checked the maintenance record on the existing machine, and I checked the current hour meter on the machine now. They've, the town of Sheffsberry has owned that machine for 180 months. The average use of that machine has been 10 hours a month. That's a lot of money for a machine you're using 10 hours a month.
How many hours have you put on it in the last 18 months?
I will grant you, Terry, that you have done...
There's another question. How many hours in the last 18 months?
We don't...
1,372 hours.
You have doubled. What was, what was, what the usage was?
Well, years. We did it 18 months.
You, it's still not, not worth that kind of money, I don't believe.
Um, and I think actually the, the answer to that question has just been posed, is that for a number of many years, under the, the prior road foreman, the, the machine was not used, was used very little.
Right.
For whatever the reasons. I don't know that, I don't know why that was. That piece of equipment now has become an integral part of what we do. Um, as, you know, as evidenced the use, as evidenced in what we're seeing, uh, out on, out on the roads. They're, they're doing the extensive amount of ditching, you know, much more than we have been done in recent years.
Oh, I don't dispute that crack. I'm just saying that, that...
It seems like a lot.
It does. It is a lot of money. And, and, um, I checked with, um, four contractors in town here that will, will do your ditching work for between $70 and $100 an hour. And it figures out for the hours that that machine, the current machine we have has been used, it's figured out to $250 an hour.
For what we paid for it. Is this for the one...
Based on what, based on what was paid for it and based on the number of hours it's been used.
Wait a minute.
But, but...
Well, I don't think we can compare apples to oranges in terms of the...
Calculate it. You're, you're, you're taking the number of years that it wasn't used and now it's being used as an integral part of it.
All, all hours included. I, I took from the hours that was on that hour meter when they purchased the machine, and I took it two weeks ago on a Sunday afternoon, I read the hour meter.
But, Ken, we didn't find the hour, the hours.
Yes, I did. I found them after I left you.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, they were over there, and I, I had misplaced the sheet.
All right, so, what were the hours when we bought it for 45 hours?
The hours when it was purchased was 5, 5,697, and the current hours on it now, or the ones that I wrote down, are 7,559 hours.
But you've already just heard that for a number of years it laid idle, and you're, you're now taking those number of hours that have been used in the past year, you should multiply those by the number of years that we had the machine, because that's how it's going to be used in the future. So, you're, you're, you're not calculating it in a reasonable way.
1,370 hours on 70,000 hours, 96,000 dollars.
Yeah. You're, you're just, you're just saying, you've had it for X number of years, and I looked at how many hours you got, and, and then I divided that number of hours by the cost. It doesn't make sense. Well, you've just heard, for the number of years, it wasn't used. Nobody's disputing that.
Well, I don't dispute that.
I don't dispute that myself. So, if you assume that you used those number of hours for the entire period that we had it, that's what the calculation should be, because that's how it's going to be used in the future.
I understand that it's, that it is being used more than it ever was, and I don't, and I don't dispute that either. And that is one of the most important things that you've got to do to maintain these roads is keeping the digits clean.
I'm not going into that. I'm talking about the, your calculations, that's all. So, we had, how many hours, and my numbers are...
1,372 hours in the last 18 months.
1,372? And how many year, how many, how many years have we had that machine?
15 years.
15. So, would it be correct to say, Terry, that your plan is to use that thing at least $1,000, $1,200 every year?
Absolutely.
So, you should be calculating 1,300 by 12 years, because that's how long we're gonna, how we're gonna use it in the future. Not 12 or 15 years, and oh, there's only been 1,300 hours on it, because it's only been used in the last year.
I don't dispute the fact he's been using it. I dispute the amount of money that you're talking about.
I'm disputing the calculation.
All right.
The way you're calculating it is, is very, very, very skewed.
Well, and if you feel that, then you don't, but, um, I...
Yeah, we also got to figure in the maintenance we've been putting into this machine in the last year for, for rebuilding the cylinders and the parts that have been broken.
I don't, I don't dispute that, Terry. I don't, I don't dispute that. I just think that to go out and buy a new machine in the, in the amount of money that you're talking, I think you can get a used machine that will do whatever you want to do. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, point taken.
Okay.
I just, Bill. Couple of questions that I have here, as I've been kind of taking in everything everybody has to say. Do we know what the, uh, what the monthly payment on this machine is going to be?
Not yet.
Okay, because I was gonna say, that might be the, the easiest way to get a number that makes sense, look at what our monthly payment's going to be, and then look at how many hours per month we're projecting, now, what we had over the course of 12 years where the machine wasn't used.
Margie's, Margie...
Wait a minute, I have, uh, I did, I projected, I got preliminary financing...
Okay.
...feedback on 190,000. Now...
I mean, I mean, it doesn't have to be exact, because...
Yeah, so, if we financed 180,000, and I, you know, quite frankly, I was reading them, so I don't remember what they've all come in at.
Well, we're looking somewhere in the 178,000.
Yeah, so, so, I said 180,000. Um, so, over five years, uh, first payment due in July, our first payment would be 28.5, We'd have a rate of about 2.49 percent.
28,500?
That's our down payment.
Does it, okay.
And then, our payments thereafter would be 32,818. Fiscal year, 14 out.
You're saying every year they'd be 32,000?
Thereafter.
Roughly?
Roughly, but if we went out seven years, you would have first payment of 28.5, uh, 2.59 percent, and you'd thereafter have about 24,000.
For seven years?
That would be seven years. And the truck, the truck I estimated is 65,000. What I wanted to do was, was to get under...
You're projecting about 100 hours a month? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, forgive me while I find my calculator here. Okay, that turns out to about 2,600 a month. And if you divide that by 100 hours, that comes out to about $26 an hour we'd be paying for the usage of the machine, which is, which is quite a bit less than the numbers that were just thrown out here. I mean, of course, there's some labor and whatnot coming onto this, but this still sounds like a very economical approach. The second question that I, that I have is, these purchases were part of the budget that we put in front of the townspeople, correct?
Yes.
So, the townspeople had voted on this and approved this, in, in essence, because it was a portion of that budget.
Correct.
Okay, I just bring that up, because we talked about the importance of the townspeople having their say in how we conduct business here at the table. So, really, what we're doing now is acting on the formality of following through with what the townspeople already approved.
Correct. But I want to point out, you can, we had a debt service payment of $38,000 in the FY13 budget, and we can meet that or, or come in under. Right now, we would be just under.
Based on the estimates that we have up to this...
Yes, because if you add the truck in, uh, you have to add another 9,500 dollars. So, you're just under the 38,000 in debt service, just.
That, that answered my question, thank you.
And you're right, I mean, this particular piece of equipment was discussed at town meeting.
Right. Ken's point is taken, that, you know, we should be prudent, as we, as we are. So, I mean, it does, it does raise a good, it is a good point to be considered, as before we get to the point of, uh, you know, if we are approving the bid, approving the purchase. But, but Bill's point, also a good one, is that it was, it has been already vetted, I guess, at least on the big, on the big-picture side.
Now, one other question I have, then I'll be quiet. All these, all these excavators are, they're all wheeled, right?
Yes.
Did they get that straightened out?
Yes, these are all wheeled.
Okay.
Here's one question.
Yes.
Just a layman sitting here thinking, but if we kept that, the old machine for 15 years, and apparently hasn't been used very much for 13 and a half years, um, what have they been digging the ditches with during that time period?
The prior years?
The backhoe.
They were using the backhoes.
Uh, and why can't we use the backhoe now?
It's not, not as efficient, I guess. Let me step back. That's, that's my assess, assessment from, you know, 10,000-foot view. Terry probably can answer that question better than I, but...
Well, that's, that's accurate. Um, I didn't realize it for a while now. I guess it's been known by the old foreman that we have a black market machine, we can't replace the parts, and that's the biggest problem. So, they were extremely afraid of breaking the machine, and then they would have anything if they needed it. I didn't realize that at first, and we started breaking pieces, and three weeks to a month to get them fixed each time we broke something.
Yeah, because the, the parts for this, or at least, as I've understood it from Terry, one half of the parts, there's basically system like hydraulics, for example, there's, they run on each side of the, one left side, one right side. It's really simplistic terms I'm using, but basically, one side of the other, all the parts for that side are no longer in existence.
You're right.
I'm not disputing, you know...
That's right.
Yeah, apparently it needs to be replaced. What I'm thinking is that during the 13 and a half mon, or years that it wasn't being used, there must've been a lot of ditches that probably weren't accurately taken care of, or...
Yes, that...
I think that's right.
I think that's an accurate...
Terry's been using, the, the, had been working on it for a year and a half, uh, Once he gets caught up on correcting all the ditches, and I'm sure there'll be maintenance on, on, on ditches for them, but will the hours being used to clean the ditches also decrease?
I don't think so. They fill in so fast with leaves and debris, that by the time we do finally get everything cleaned out, the first one, we're definitely gonna have to start over cleaning them out again. And if you know the backhoe functions, that you only get a quarter turn, versus the excavator you get a full turn, it is more than three times probably faster with an excavator than with a backhoe.
All right.
It's a different operation. It's definitely a, a different piece of equipment. And again, you know, Ken can also attest to having run this stuff. I've observed its operation. I've observed its operation, haven't tried to run it, because that's a whole nother problem.
Just as in light, if we put it here quickly, for like cleaning culverts across the road, we have to shut a road down. It's much quicker to put a culvert in with that to get the road reopened. Or if we do set DIs when we have to, we have to have a piece of equipment big enough to set the DIs. Our backhoe is not big enough to let them cement boxes into the ground. There's several reasons why we're going with this size of machine.
But it will also bring down, have a lot less wear and tear on the backhoe, right?
Yeah, yes.
Or it'll be using that less.
Correct. Thank you. All right. Any other comments at this point on this? So we'll move on. Thank you for your comments. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Clean Harbors contracts. This contract was circulated for the review of the board, and ahead of time, there had been a couple of suggestions on, some minor wording suggestions that I think have we had a chance to, or I guess we'll let Carl present what he had.
I have, yeah. And two components to what I wanted to do. See, I've been very concerned about the expense budget, and the increase in our costs. So I just wanted people to also take a look at this before we- I had sent out one spreadsheet before the meeting, but I revised one, just one out, because I wanted to go back to the 2011 figures.
Oh. I don't have any confidence.
Okay, you found it.
It's the same color though?
No, this is the color one.
It's the same one, but I can't put it in color.
Okay.
But the 2011 figures, let's see, in column one, two, is it the first column at the bottom under the HHW grant? I think I only had twelve hundred dollars in income coming in, but we actually had, the grant for the full twelve months would have been twenty-two hundred, ten. Then the grant for the fiscal year twelve was twenty-four hundred dollars. So what we're, in this period, the fall collection had a subsidy of eleven hundred ninety-seven dollars in grant. This particular collection, the one two weeks from now, will have a grant subsidy of twelve hundred fifty dollars, plus an unknown pesticide grant amount. So the way this is playing out, our disposal costs up above, that's very, that's a variable depending on households that come and basically the waste stream they provide in it. Sometimes we get a lot more fluorescent bulbs, sometimes we get more pesticides, sometimes we don't. So we had a peak in the spring of eleven. That might have been light bulb driven. So our disposal costs average between, say, four thousand, I don't ever think they'll be that low again, but we're averaging around fifty-five hundred to sixty-nine hundred dollars. And of last fall's costs, about six hundred dollars of that is fluorescent bulbs. So that's, we're trying to see if we can handle that separately. We had forecasted in 2012, the not-to-exceed limit was nine thousand dollars per event. But we've underbudgeted. And I've just decided we still have underbudgeted. So that's why my projection is that we will see a budget, an actual expense opposite our budget figure, and it's going to exceed the 2013 budget.
What did we budget in expense for 2013?
So we had budgeted. I did this, we did this in our cash flow analysis, but I'll get back to it again. Where's my waste budget? Here we go. We had budgeted sixteen thousand for fourteen. This year, we had only budgeted twelve.
The year that we're in right now?
Yes. Yeah, and we've already got an actual of nine thousand. So we were nine hundred bucks over the not-to-exceed. But we got a pesticide grant to help offset for the first time. So we are going to have, we have a budget of twelve, and we're going to be coming in at eighteen.
Now, where did we figure into our, into the budget, like our, the panel in Stanford Show?
Well, that comes in under operating, under revenue. See, that's why I had, you had to look at this-
So it is accounted for? Okay.
Yes. So the net to the taxpayers, for fiscal year eleven was forty-five hundred dollars. The net for fiscal year twelve, the net tax impact was fifty-two hundred. And so far, we've got a net of thirty-nine hundred dollars. That's the actual impact.
Okay.
Okay. And as you can see above, it's the, what I'd like to go back out to bid again is that the setup costs went from a thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. So we're stuck with that through the fall. But in the fall, you have an additional thousand dollars in income coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Because the towns in the FY14 budget will be kicking in twenty-five hundred dollars each.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So-
Thank you, Marty. That's really helpful.
I wanted to just, I just had to see that myself as well. I was also very concerned. So now, Carl's concerns. I went back to the 2012 contract, and we never did get a contract back, Carl, that stated that they agreed to comply with the laws of the state of Vermont versus Massachusetts. The other-
I don't know why I seem to remember that that was the one thing they would agree to. They wouldn't agree amongst the other teams.
We sent it off.
Oh, we sent it off?
We had sent it off, and then it got lost, and also, they had a transition in staff, I think. We've never provided a police officer. We've always crossed that out and put community representative.
Well, I would propose we do that again.
Yes.
Okay.
And did we put an amount in there the last time?
We had nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
But what I've already done is limited the hours. So if you'd like to limit it to, say, eight this time, see if we can do that.
Well, yeah, because considering we're already-
Or six, or whatever. Or not hold it at all. We have that option.
No, we don't. No, but we have to have two hazardous waste days.
Well, our certification is under review right now.
Well, we're already committed to-
I don't think that's a good option.
We're going to have it, but I do think that there's a point of limiting it, and I mean, I'd hate for us to go over nine thousand dollars again.
Oh, I would be more comfortable with, you can definitely do nine, but I think we can even try eight thousand.
If we said eight, um-
Now, what that means, the only way we can do that is, I have the 2012 disposal rates, and I have the records over the past couple of years as to what people bring in. And what we would have to be doing is tracking exactly the drums, flex bins, you know, Gaylords, and trying to do an estimate that way. Starting off with, let's just assume a three thousand dollar setup. Because what they do is they have a twenty-five hundred dollar mobilization, demobilization charge, and then they have a variable fixed prices based on our tonnage. They have what's called their, it's another fee.
Recovery fee.
Recovery fee.
Yep.
And they also charge us for supplies.
I wanted to double-check something about, so I guess the one question I would have is, when we're saying not, you know, nine thousand, eight thousand, is that, we need to be very clear with them, because we can say eight thousand, and they may look at that as the disposal cost, as opposed to the total contract setup fee, and we need to include all of that.
Okay.
And the used oil, I wanted to go back to that, it's a very, very small component.
Okay.
We don't, it's not a great-
It's, the biggest expense is, quite frankly, oil tank bottoms. I just think that it means vigilance.
Right.
But I'm going to need some more volunteers to help track.
We-
And I know, we need to keep moving.
Okay. So we covered the questions on the contract.
Well, let me just make sure we did. We, we were, Carl had suggested on number five-
Number six, five and six here.
Five and six. Community hereby grants Clean Harbors the absolute right to reject any waste, is how it reads. And Carl, you were suggesting any-
My recollection is, again, these are comments I've made last year, and I don't believe they'd agree to them, but-
Yes, yes.
You know, it is, it is a contract. I didn't like the language. I have a problem with rejecting appropriate, you know, waste, but to reject any waste. It's, we're going to get this contract every year, my comments are going to do the same every year.
And they're well-paken.
So I'm not about to fall on my sword on any of these, except the one that I think that really should be, the very last one, which is, they're performing the work in Vermont for Vermont entity, they're moving the waste from Vermont, and they're agreeing that they are only going to be judged by Massachusetts law if something happens? That seems very strange to me. And I really thought that that was the one thing they agreed to last time.
And that's the one that I would almost fall on my sword for, is that one.
So I'm going to cross out Commonwealth of Massachusetts and put, well, it says, "The validity interpretation and performance of this agreement shall be governed and construed in accordance with the laws of the state of Vermont."
Correct.
And jurisdiction of the courts of the state of Vermont.
Correct.
Okay. You know, in terms of the actual contract amount, when you look at what we have spent over the last few years in disposal costs, I mean, we've ranged from forty-one hundred for one event, eight thousand for another, fifty-five hundred, or fifty-six hundred almost, and fifty-three hundred, and then last fall, sixty-nine hundred. I mean, if we, you know, if we could think about maybe disposal costs of fifty-five hundred dollars, we've got a setup of twenty-five hundred, and then the recovery fees, I mean, that would bring us to about eighty-five hundred dollars for a total amount. So I would propose that we put that amount in there, because that is going to bring us-
Eighty-five, not more than eight thousand five hundred.
Yeah, because that's already going to bring us a little bit over eighteen thousand dollars for the total year's package.
If I could ask a question about the setups on this? I know we're required to have two days per year, but are we required to take everything at both days? Could it minimize the setup cost if we did, say, tires once a year, tires in the fall, and used oil?
They don't do the toll.
Or, yeah, used oil and-
Yes, we could.
I see.
Or that's in the spring, or-
Yep.
Because, I mean, you're looking at five thousand dollars out of that budget being setup fees, and if there's any way to minimize those setup fees, it would be worthwhile. I think as a taxpayer, I'd rather only be able to-
Well, you know, the setup fee would not be waste stream dependent. You're going to get all the guys here regardless.
Well, that was my question, if you-
I don't think we can, I think the setup is the setup. I don't think it matters what we take.
Okay. I didn't know if they had to set up different things for different types of materials, because it's not like they take it all and put it into exactly the same thing.
Right.
I presume the setup was just that, you know, they've got a tent there, they've got their suits, they've got their people.
The trailer and the-
I don't, I don't-
Yeah, I think it is what it is.
I'm not sure why it would be that different.
Well, there's costs associated with compartmentalizing it.
I did suggest that they had way too many people last year, and that they should not set so many, bring so many people. They were tripping over each other.
Yeah.
And he said, "Sure, I'd look into it." And I said, "Oh, good, so you'll charge us, you know, reduce the setup fee." Well, I haven't heard that. So I'm trying to get them to agree.
Is there any other game into, I mean, you talked about putting this out to bid.
Yes, we can do this. There are three other vendors.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yep, to look at. I tell you, the disposal fees don't vary drastically, because there are only so many places in the country that you take things. It's really their overhead and the size of their crews and-
Yeah, the transportation is probably the same nationwide.
Yep. You want Recra-approved facilities here and there, so, all right.
So do we have, it's too full of things, they don't talk about it.
So do we need a motion to approve the contract with Clean Harbors as amended?
Yeah, I think that would-
With the total amount not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars?
I think that would be good.
All right. And I've gotten the amendments, voting the waste stream, and state of Vermont language in there, and the not-to-exceed amount. Typically, it was the chair that signed it.
Eighty-five hundred.
Shall I wait to sign this once they correct this, or are we just going to send this as a-
That's how we're sending it to them. I'll send it right down.
All right. So we have a motion to approve this contract as we've discussed, amended as discussed? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion regarding the matter? If being now all is in favor of approving the contract with Clean Harbors as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next two items, I think we should move through further quickly. Conflict of interest policy for our fourth reading. Carl's and Karen, I believe, both had some amendments. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
I'll just mention that a couple of things that I had sent out to everybody, some were just the edits. I think, did you all get the track change version that I sent out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I think I put it in the email.
Yep.
The one thing, the more that I read through this and compared it to, you know, again, this goes back a long way. And this started with a workshop that we had with BLCT back in, I want to say it was like 2008, or I forget when, but in any case, at that time, the board had talked about having the conflict of interest policy only applying to the select boards. And since that time, the board has decided that we wanted this to apply to all boards and commissions. So it made me, you know, take another look at where we have the conflict of interest to bring back in some of the language that had been in very early versions that would have- have impacted a situation, um, you know, for some of the boards, particularly like the DRB that handles quasi-judicial, um, situations. And that was the reason that I added in section five as a conflict, which reads, "A situation where a public official has publicly displayed a prejudgment of the merits of a particular quasi-judicial proceeding before the public body of which the officer is a member. This shall not apply to a member's particular political views or general opinion on a given issue." And then the next section would be, "A situation where a public official has not disclosed ex parte communications with a party in a proceeding before the public body of which the officer is a member." Bless you. Bless you. Um, so, and then the other I had added in the language that I think Carl had, um, shared, which I thought was good last time, on the definition of an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I had also added in, um, you know, depending upon what the board wants to do with these other two additions, a definition for the ex parte communication. And I also realized we didn't have a definition in there for recuse, um, which seemed important because it's certainly mentioned enough in here. And then if you look at article five, um, section C, um, that was where Carl brought in, um, the very, you know, simple way, I think, of solving that, um, issue that we had with, I think it's five, C and six, something or other, where there was a conflict. Essentially, one, one part of it was saying that they can, a select, a member can never present, and, um, in the other section, it was saying, "When they do this, this is how they'll do it." So I thought, actually, that was a good suggestion that you had, Carl, for how to remedy that problem. Um, so, the, I guess the only question that I might have is, is this enough of a substantive change, or does it matter? You know, if we were to add these other two sections? And then the other question that I had was because, I know we've had open meetings, it certainly has been advertised enough, but, um, you know, because we're bringing that piece into it and because we are, um, looking at this as a policy that would impact all of our boards and commissions, that, you know, we might wanna run this by all of those folks prior to a final approval. I'm just throwing those two thoughts out there.
If I might comment?
Absolutely.
Um, I guess it's, do we handle this as, as a democracy, uh, or to be courteous, or as a governing board that reasonably has decided how the town should be operated? I'm all for democracy and getting information, but I, I, I don't think this type of policy, whatever the status of this thing is, is well-served by, um, handling in that kind of, if you will, democratic way. Uh, I can see sending around for, to see if there's some conflict somewhere, that somebody has a problem the way it's written, but, but not for substantive changes because the select board, whoever's gonna be sitting on the select board is gonna be basically the leadership of the town, and I think the leadership of the town should set the standard for the town, uh, and not, not necessarily see what, what the majority thinks. So in this particular case, 'cause this is highly subjective, highly subjective, and so you're not gonna get, uh, an objective result when you're talking about what is a conflict of interest, that, um, unless you wanted to send it around simply for notice and, and, but not for, for, not requesting comments, uh, I, that's the only way that I would suggest to go, go out.
Thank you, Carl.
I think, you know, I concur with Carl here that I don't, you know, I think there could be value to sending it out to different committees to get, you know, they may have another side that we didn't see, but I think that we actually protect them by not sending it out to them. 'Cause I think if we send it out to them, we get any substantive changes from anyone on, from any committee, the first time there's something that someone in the town thinks should've been a conflict of interest and isn't for the policy, first thing you're gonna hear is, "Well, this group wanted this changed for this situation." And if we, if we set it as the governing body, then they're basically protected, you know? Is this a conflict of interest? Well, according to the rules set forth, you know, by this policy, it's not. And then if there's anybody at fault, it's really, you know, it's us. It doesn't look like there was any self-serving in the development of the policy.
Thank you. Ken?
I think it's pretty good the way it is.
With the revisions.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
I would tend to concur also with this, that this is a policy that, that we, one of the things we're elected to do is to make these, is to, as Carl so eloquently put it, to lead and set some of the direction and these sorts of things. So, um, I, I think that the corrections made solve the problems that we discussed previously and, uh, and would, uh, and, you know, it provides the guidance that we're looking to provide here. So with that idea in mind, I guess it would be my suggestion that we move forward with adopting the policy, uh, per, per the amendments.
I'm very happy with that. I mean, I, I just had brought that up, you know, for the board because, again, these were two things that I had added in here that...
Right. Okay. All right, with that in mind, if we're of that opinion, then I would entertain a motion to approve the policy as, to include the amendments in this last draft that Karen put together.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion on the matter? There being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Um, Karen, would you be able to do a final draft for us?
Sure.
And then we can publish it as the, the document of record to move forward.
Sure. Yep.
And we can, we will sign that document at our next meeting, just so we have it, uh...
I must say, I'm really happy to have this finally accomplished because it has really been at least six years, seven years in the process.
Right.
So it's really good to have.
Thank you for, thank you to the board and prior members as well for all the input.
Oh, yeah, they did a lot of work on this and...
Yes, they did. Okay, the next one, also should, this should be a relatively easy one. We, at a prior meeting, um, had, um, discussed and agreed upon to the re, um, the description of the reserve fund balance policy was, um, was changed. And basically, I believe tonight, Margie, bring me up, if I, tell me if I'm wrong, I did...
All you're doing is, uh, you already made, made a motion to change the amount of the set aside into the fund balance reserve fund, uh, to increase to fifteen percent.
Mm-hmm.
Not to exceed fifteen percent of the general and highway fund budget.
Right.
So this just memorializes that action. I had a note that it was to be done after town meeting.
Okay.
So that's what you're doing.
So basically, if, the difference in this is, is that the prior policy had a much smaller, um, annual amount that could be put in here. What this does, is this, this change allows us to line up with the new, based on our, as we've worked through what the fund balance actually is and what it, how it works, this actually aligns with how we're now handling it, is that it will not allow this amount to exceed a, as it says here, fifteen percent of the general and highway fund budget, can never be higher than that. With the changes that we made, for example, for the two thousand fourteen budget, I believe that it's about eleven percent. That amount is about eleven percent of the, um, of the proposed budget for two thousand fourteen. The idea behind it, and that follows the state, and I'm gonna go out on a limb here, which I shouldn't do, when Bill Fisk had done some research on this factor, when we kinda made the, came to grips around what the money was, how much it was, um, he, he checked, um, I believe statute as well as practice around the state, and I believe the, uh, the advice that he got from the state was that it should be somewhere between twelve and fifteen, or ten and fifteen percent of the, uh, of the annual budget was what the recommendation was. So our current one for this year, I believe, is approximately eleven percent, if I recall. So we're, um, we're using that. The, the further thing was, it wasn't to stock up money, um, the idea is, is to, there's some statutory requirements that if you do have amounts that go too high, it is used to, it needs to be used to reduce the tax burden in coming years. So all this is doing, again, summing that up, is just changing the funding amount and actually limiting how much we can put in as a, at a maximum amount, or the maximum amount that the fund can be at, at any time.
Well, it's essentially also affirming the vote that was taken by the townspeople at town meeting.
Correct.
I mean, this was an article that was raised at town meeting and had an affirmative vote, so we're, we're following their instructions to do that, too.
Thank you for that better summary than I had. Thank you. Um, so with that in mind, if we could have a motion to approve the amendment to the reverse, reserve fund balance policy as we've discussed?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the matter? There being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item is a request to cater by timetables.
Seen this one before.
Well, this is a request to cater at the firehouse on Saturday, April twenty-seventh.
So we're acting as the liquor board on this?
Yes, you're acting as the liquor board.
Right.
To cater malt beverages and venus beverages. And you don't need to all sign this, but you do need a motion to approve or disapprove...
I move to approve the request.
Second?
Any discussion on the matter? There being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And I'll sign that, correct?
You don't need to.
Oh, that's right, nobody needs to. Okay. All right. In light of two things, one, Bill's announcement earlier that he would be leaving our table after tonight's meeting, as well as our hour again, um, I'm gonna ask that we, again, table the select board liaison assignments. I am going to, I, I did take the liberty of, before knowing, before Bill made his announcement, um, I made some suggestions. Instead of us going down the list and picking them off one at a time, I made some, I took the liberty of making some suggestions on assignments. Those are still open for discussion, but I just placed them in there a little bit of, simplistically, um, a lot of the same assignments that had been there, um, I assigned, uh, a lot of what I had previously to Ken, since the new guy on, because I was taking on a good number of ones that the chair previously had. Some of those make sense. I thought at least that would be a starting point for when we actually do have the discussion. I will email that to you, and, uh, when we take it up again, at least it's a point we can start from. If there's things that you flat out don't want any part of or are afraid of, that'll be the time to speak your, speak your piece. Or if there's things you really don't wanna be involved with, that'd be the time to do that. But at least it's a starting point, so I will circulate that to you.
Okay.
All right. Um, Town Lodge Committee. Karen?
Um...
She's the...
I'm now the, Carl thought we should have a facilitator, so...
Thanks a lot.
I really left it open there. I really, you know, I tried, but, you know, whatever. Okay, so I am the facilitator, so I take the minutes. We had another, we had a great group of folks there, a few more people, um, residents that came to our meeting last Wednesday. Apologize, I do not have the minutes. Um, I had intended to do that this afternoon and I was occupied with Boston situations. Um, so we, um, there were a number of things. We, we talked about our communications, um, we did discuss the lot next door and base, you know, essentially the idea was, let's begin to tackle some issues that have been raised and see if we can, you know, kinda put them to bed, so to speak, or determine whether or not more information is needed, or we need to, you know, go down a different path. And, um, the whole group, um, really felt as though there was enough information that was provided regarding the history of that lot, um, and the fact that it really wasn't available to the town, um, at what was a, would've been a reasonable price. So the committee just, you know, said, "Yes, that's off the table, we are looking at the lot that we're looking at." There was some really good information that came out. Ken had brought some information, we had some other folks. Michael Gardner had provided some really good info about, um, uh, some projects that have been done in different parts of the state, which, um, you know, the facilities committee certainly had been familiar with, but, you know, it's, it's kind of opened, um, everybody up to looking at what could be some alternatives to the salt shed. That really was the big one, I think, um, rather than, um, you know, looking at how we had originally been, um, envisioning that building, basically putting it up and it can last for sixty, seventy years, uh, but at a higher cost. Maybe we should be looking at those kind of buildings that you see that have the fabric, um, you know, hoop thing over it. Admittedly, those need to be replaced every, I forget what it was, ten to fifteen years, maybe.
Ten, twelve to fifteen years, they say generally.
Yeah. Um, there would be an initial, um, lower cost, um, you know, and that's, I mean, it may be that we have to look at that kind of thing, um, in order to get this through. You know, nobody really knows where the sweet spot is in terms of the figure, um, but we're, we're looking at maybe around a million. Is there a way that we can bring this full project in at that amount? So there's, we are meeting for the, the, uh, the public's information, we're meeting the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. We do have a bowl of a bond vote again in, at least in November. I mean, it's possible we could, you know, get things together prior to that, um, but that's what we're looking at. We, we really encourage folks to come to these meetings. I would encourage the select board members, these meetings are noticed, so any select board member, you know, can be there, and I would really encourage it.
When's the next meeting?
April twenty-fourth.
Yep. April twenty-fourth, not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday.
Six thirty.
Six thirty here. Um, Ken, anything that you...
There was, I forget, I, after pardon, I terribly remember names.
Yeah.
But someone mentioned getting a straight bank loan rather than a bond.
That was interesting. Michael Gardner brought this up. He had spoken with, I think it was, was it Montgomery? Anyway, it was another town that, um, they did not go out for a bond, they didn't work through the municipal bond bank. They got a straight loan through, you know, a Vermont bank. And I think he said their interest rate was too low.
I think it was Bank of Bennington was mentioned, possibly.
Um, somebody mentioned Bank of Bennington, but I don't think that was who...
No, I don't, I don't think that was either, but...
...funded. Um, now, one of the things that Michael, you know, thought was an advantage to doing it that way, or that had been conveyed to him, was that, um, because it wasn't through the bond bank, they could go out to local contractors. We could too, even if, if we went through the bond bank, you know, you still, you can have your... your loc-- you can have your, you know, the person that oversees it. Well, you really would want to have a bond, I mean, when you're doing a project of that amount. But, we would still have the ability to have them subcontract to local folks. But that, you know, that was interesting. So, we're trying to gather those kinds of pieces of information. The advantage to that is that you wouldn't have to wait for the bond bank. So, the bond bank is only once a year that they sell the bonds.
That would potentially advantage them.
Yeah, so--
Sounds like some really, really good thought process, or some great ideas coming to the table.
Yeah. Yep, they really, really have been. You know, so we'll see what we can get at. I mean, it does seem as though, in terms of the size of the actual garage facility itself, I'm not talking pole barn, the pole barn or the salt shed, the actual garage facility, you know, with some exceptions, I think the majority of folks is-- have been looking at the space and saying, well, you know, maybe we can tweak it a little bit, but it --does it make sense to, you know, cut out, maybe we can cut out a bay, or financially, does that-- does it make sense to do that?
Right.
Because when you start to look at the numbers and figure out, you know, over the course of a 20-year finance, you know, does it make sense to cut out a bay and then lose the ability that that would have given you?
Right. The cost benefits may or may not bear out doing that.
Right. So, those are all the kinds of things that we're taking a solid look at. And there will be, again, columns in the paper, we're looking at doing a survey once we get the information, enough information out to the community, so. So, there'll be lots more coming. Anything else, Margie?
I found about, well, when I went to that Sleckman's School around Saturday--
Oh, yeah, you were up there, yeah.
--three of the Pownell Sleckman--
Pownell, down here, yeah.
And they, they're salt grubs, I got to go and see it, I just get over there. They made one themselves. They just like, well, it's kind of like the one that Bennington's got down there across from Molly Stark.
Oh, yeah.
They just pour a concrete wall and a base, and put their own roof on it.
Mm-hmm.
And Bennington's got, I don't know, they got tons and tons, I bet they got a thousand tons of salt in there.
Yeah, that's a pretty good size.
Yeah.
Okay.
So--
Okay. So, the process is moving along as we'd hoped, but--
It is. I'm really, I think people left that meeting really encouraged. I think people felt really good. I do, too. There was some really good give and take, and, yeah, it felt really good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Margie? Town administrator's report?
The road crew has just started summer hours, and after consulting our highway liaison, Craig, we were thinking that maybe we would have a sunset on that for September 30th.
Or the week of September 30th.
The week of September 30th. We have received the conceptual plans for the little sidewalk project over here. The sidewalk committee will now have a meeting in the near distant future, now that committee members are all back in town.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping to meet this week or early next week to review those plans, make comments, and turn that around. Keep that design process moving ahead. Still waiting for a notice from the Agency of Transportation's Traffic Committee regarding our petition to lower the speed limit in the village, regarding the intersection out here, and also a ruling on whether or not we could have a signalized crossing, whereas, so if you wanted to cross 7A, you'd hit the button, and the light, you have lights flashing. Ultimately, the goal is to try to get rid of the overhead flasher and have street-side And also to hear back from the traffic committee about various proposals of stop lines and stop bars, and maybe to try to reduce the amount of haphazard parking right in the center of town. Get some suggestions that wouldn't infringe upon property owners' need to provide on-street parking, but maybe to organize it a little better. I did follow up to my best with the Vermont Center for GIS regarding public comments on the need to obtain mapping services, but in a way that's not duplicative of state services and state data layers that may or may not, well, that are in any way relevant to parcel mapping, for our pleasure. And found that, yes, there is indeed lots of data that's available to us, but no, they do not have data that's particularly germane to parcel mapping itself. So, after going through that exercise, I'm now feeling we've gone out far enough in time where I just think that the listers need to get back to bidders now with written, a written request, because we've had so many emails going back and forth that I'm not sure exactly of who's saying what cost now. In the meantime, the planning commission has become interested in picking up this dialogue about mapping services. So, I think we've got this really nice blend of--
That's great.
--both departments. We had taken it as an approach initially. Tyler had met with us, so it was the listers and the zoning administrator interviewing people. But now the planning commissioners are all on board, so whether or not we end up with the vendor that impressed people the most to interviews or not, remains to be seen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that's really my report right now. Few bids will be coming your way, as Karen had already asked. I have a draft May 6 agenda, which I'll leave with Craig. And that's--
Can I assume that the road crew is upgrading all roads at this point?
That's where they are.
That's where they--
They started early, and they're hoping to get four days in this--
I've seen them.
You've already got some, I've already got some comments to the positive of--
Good. Can't wait.
Most people can.
Other business? Ken, Bill?
Nope.
Carl?
Nope.
Karen? Margie and I will work, begin working through the progress, process to fill a select board position. Thank you again for your service. Bill, we'll miss you. Good luck.
Yes, Bill, I'm going to miss everything with animal control, all lined up with big meetings. Boy, really? Do you have a big meeting?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
How long have you been going about what the proper procedure is? Were those folks on a strobe light position?
In real simple terms, we have to post the position as open, so those posting--
Post and publish.
Post and publish. Those will go out. We will make-- Margie will follow the statute on that. What we need to do, she will also personally send emails to you, but to the members of the community. All joking aside, it'll be, it'll go out through the regular mailing list, and it will be posted in accordance with the rules. So, it'll be the normal places, in the paper, et cetera.
I appreciate that, I just wanted to assure you that we don't have a repeat of March 18th.
No, we will not.
Repeat of March 18th.
Yes.
March 18th.
Thank you.
As I recall, just a little bit more detail, as I recall, for select board positions, generally if there's multiple people interested, I believe, I don't know that, I think it has to go back for a vote, as a special vote.
Well, I think, you know--
I don't remember this for sure, but--
I think you have, there are different ways you can do it. I mean, we could have a special election. How, when did you, how much time was left on your term? One or two years?
At this point, just under two years.
Two years. Because I've never had to do that.
Well, I'm going to do, but going from my own memory, this is my original, I originally joined the select board, there was resignation, I applied. As it turned out at that point, though, I was the only applicant. So, it was within the board's perusal at that point, it would be silly to run a special election for when only one person had applied. So, basically, I come in, was interviewed, and was subsequently appointed. But I believe had there been multiple people, then I believe that there are some options. I think it could be an election, or it could be an appointment. I don't recall the details on that, but--
I think the statute gives the board flexibility.
Right. So--
Those are the kinds of questions that I hope would be spelled out with this email as to how we publish the process.
I believe that--
Well, it should be in the paper, it shouldn't be an email. It should be on the, it should be on the website, we should have it up on the website.
It will, we will post the appropriate data, it will be part of--
Well, now, here's an interesting question, because if there are variables or different paths to choose, then we're not done. We're going to have to decide that at your next meeting, or hold a special meeting, once we look into this.
Okay.
Does that sound, am I sounding rational?
Yeah, oh, no, I completely agree.
The bottom line is, we'll do our damnedest to make sure that there's no, that there will be no stone left unturned. Okay.
Thank you.
That's my word on that. Motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Thank you.